Welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Abington School Committee on Tuesday, January 28, 2020 at the Abington Middle High School Library. Before we get into the order of business, I just wanted to make note that a local elected official, somebody who served this town greatly over the years, passed away last week. Jack Buckley passed away on January 21st. He was educated in Abington Elementary Schools, elected the town's treasurer in 1960, served 10 years as the town's moderator. He was a member of the Citizens Scholarship Committee and Abington Education Foundation Community Preservation Committee, which he was a big part of, co-captain of Abington's Old Town Football Association, and as well as chairman of the Democratic Town Committee for 25 years. His public service, he served six terms in the Mass House of Reps, Secretary of Administration and Finance, and the Executive Vice President, interim president of the community college system. Our condolences go out to the Buckley family, to all of Abington. As we rise to salute the flag, I just ask for a moment of silence before that. So at this time, ask anybody to use their eyes. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before I open it up to any hearing of visitors, on our agenda, we have Jim Connolly on there. I've asked Jim to come speak, he's now the former, he has resigned, he's the former school committee representative to Abington CAM. Jim, if you wouldn't mind if coming to the podium for us, thank you. Jim, first, I just want to thank you for the year and a half that you served as our representative. I know it's a volunteer position, for taking the time. I appreciate you still coming tonight, even though you had resigned already. I appreciate coming to answer any questions anybody on the board would have. I don't know if there's anything you wanted to say to start or no?
No, I would have, I asked for questions from the board and I didn't get any, so I don't know where you want to start, how you want to start.
I don't have so much of a question, it more, and I understand, and everybody I think understands, that there's certain things that may have happened with Abington CAM that are, we don't want to talk about, we don't have any jurisdiction on personnel matter or anything to that effect. I think my only, what I was going to bring up before, and I guess this could go to whoever ends up taking your place, is that the time, more of the timing, when, so our concern is the school. With the school-related part of it, I wish maybe it could have been handled better, communication maybe better with the staff at Abington High School, with the students. I know the day that there was a change made in the director, some of the students got kind of left in the lurch, weren't aware of where they could go, so that was something that concerned me, and I can't speak to the timing of how you have to go through personnel matters, but, and I've said this before, I think it's best from a school perspective, if it can happen over a summer. So that's something, but I understand that those decisions are out of this committee's control.
I understand that now.
Yeah, yeah.
That would have been a lot smoother.
I mean, that was one of my biggest concerns on it. Does anybody else want to ask anything? I mean, there is, so there is one, it's ongoing, I understand you're no longer on that board, but none of our meetings have been able to get onto YouTube.
Oh, yeah.
I know they're on television. I don't know if there's any light you can shed as to maybe when that may be resolved or anything like that. If you can't resolve anything, if you can't speak to it under the circumstances...
Yeah, I can speak to it.
I understand, okay.
I talked to Kevin Tocchi today, he had to restart a whole YouTube account because of what happened.
Okay.
I don't know if he wants to get into more detail about it.
Do you want to talk, Kevin? Just so Kevin Tocchi, Director of Abington CAM, just to help fill us in, thank you.
Actually, when I took over, you said none of the school committee meetings had been put up.
Well, no, there were a few that weren't recorded, the last couple hadn't been recorded.
Yeah, well, that was prior to my taking over, but actually, yes, what Jim just said is correct. A new account has been taken over, we've had a little bit of an issue, an IT issue that we're working through, but there is a new, the reason for the delay for creating a new YouTube account, we're hoping to be able to get back the old one that we had.
Okay.
Last thing I want to do, we have 1,000 subscribers, and I don't want to create confusion with these two accounts. 1,000 people took the time to go on there, there were over 400,000 views, and people who go there religiously, so it's going to take some time to get people to make the switch over. I mean, as of your January 7th meeting, that one's being uploaded to the new site right now.
Okay.
Tonight will be uploaded, so that's one thing you don't have to worry about. We've taken care, and that'll be something that will be made known on Facebook, our new Twitter account, and then once the website is up in a couple of weeks, that will be published there too.
And you had mentioned that all of our meetings had been appearing on local cable, though. We got like three times.
They have been, yes.
Okay.
Yes, three times a day, seven days a week.
Okay.
Anybody who's here who may watch the channel, hopefully, if you want to attest to it, so be it, if not, the last one that you had, that will be up, as will this one moving forward, they will be.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. I don't know, anything else that anything for Kevin or Jim? Okay, thank you both, I appreciate your time. Jim, again, thank you. One thing I wanted to add, so Jim will need a, so we'll be electing another representative to fulfill the rest of Jim's term, which runs through August 2021, I'm sorry, October 2021 on the board. At this time, anybody who's interested, I would ask them to email me, it's Christopher Coyle at AbingtonPS.org, and anything that comes through, I can disperse it to the rest of the committee. We will talk it over, it'll be part of our February, the plan is for it to be part of our February meeting agenda, and at that time, pick a successor to Mr. Connolly for the remainder of his term through October 2021. If anybody in. All right. Yes, Mr. Sche?
May I make a suggestion?
Of course.
Have that posted on the work with Kevin Tocchi, do you have that posted on the cable TV, state it also?
No problem.
And also, you may want to have it, see if you record it on Tom Holland, or of course, get the maximum number, maximum of visibility out there, so people don't say I didn't know about it.
No, no problem, that sounds good, thank you. I'll post it on my Facebook page as well.
Can I talk to you, Chris, about certain qualifications I think is needed?
Yeah.
Do you want to share with the board?
I mean, I know you mentioned somebody with like a business background, maybe something that could be vital to this, that was the key one that I remembered, I don't know if there's any...
Yeah, somebody that's really savvy on computers, and maybe even a lawyer, I don't know, I don't care for lawyers anyway, but, you know, that might be coming handy.
Okay, understood. Well, thank you again, Jim, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
I know you have somewhere to be tonight too, so thank you, I appreciate you making the time to come.
No problems on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
We appreciate it.
Is there anybody else for hearing of visitors? I just need you to give your name and your address when you get up there, okay?
Hi, I'm Leanne Rushton, and this is my husband, Patrick, and we live at 53 Bayberry Road in Abington. So I just wanted to briefly review an incident that took place last Wednesday. I've talked to the superintendent and Principal Basta at length. My son goes to kindergarten at Beaverbrook Elementary, and at the end of recess was approached by a stranger who, per what he says, said to kind of, like, didn't say verbally, but it went like this to him and his friend Colton. They went, reported that incident to the teachers. I did not hear about the incident until about 3:30, when Noah got off the bus and told me. The police weren't notified until I called them shortly after Noah got off the bus. Email went out from the public schools, that was completely inaccurate and dismissive. We reviewed the tapes, I see a car, no, we cannot make out what the person is saying as we have established. Second email went out after I asked, which I appreciate, it did kind of validate that there was a car, still we could not see the man. I guess I just want to know, is there a way we can decrease the traffic pattern going through the parking lot? Because I know there was a lot of confusion on who this car was, whether it was a North River Collaborative van, or, you know, someone dropping their child off, nobody could say who they were. So I'm wondering if we should have more supervision, I know a lot of moms had said they would volunteer to be out at the recess gate, and I am bringing it to the school committee to have on record, and perhaps you all can come up with a plan on how, if something like this does happen again, the police should be called immediately when the child reports it, and, you know, it was really just poorly handled in my eyes, and it's my six-year-old baby that was, you know, at the center of it, so it really affected me.
Okay.
Could I have just an opportunity, oh, sorry.
Sorry, no. No, I know we discussed this, and I do have faith in you completely that, you know, this will be a learning lesson and you can do better.
So it was good to meet with you, and I think I met your mom.
Yeah.
It's good to meet you that day, and Mr. Basta, and first off, as I said at the meeting, I'm glad your son is safe, and they're all the kids are safe and they're all home. Obviously, that's the most important thing. Secondly, it was reported to the police when administration found out about it, and it was in process, and a call was going to be made to you, and you called us first because you talked to your son first. We talked about that at the meeting. There were two different officers that the school department talked to, and then the second officer is the one that took the report, and then I believe you actually met and watched the video with that officer?
Yeah.
So that did take place. And when you watched the video with the officer, I'm not saying that the boys didn't experience what they're describing, or they feel the way that they saw it, the way they reported it. The facts that they provided evolved a little bit. They watched the video, the video did not compare to what they were talking about, there was a van that moved through slowly, but there was no surveillance that...
So I don't know if it was a van, from what I understand, Chevy Traverse?
There was no surveillance video that concluded what your son reported. And so the notices that went out tried to say that, we tried to say that it was reported, but that the camera couldn't confirm it, was the language that we used, because those were the facts of the situation in the case. And like I talked about with you, we took it as an opportunity to go top to bottom, and just let's look at what we're doing anyway. Whether it happened or didn't happen, thank God, everybody's safe, but let's check our protocols, let's check where people are standing, let's the sightlines, we want to make sure everybody's safe, because I'd rather have 100 meetings or a million meetings like this than one meeting where your boy doesn't come home.
Me too, yeah.
So that's the meeting we had. We did that work pre-K through 6, because those are recesses. And at the meeting, one of the things you talked about was volunteers, and I know that Chris has looked into that, the principal of the Beaverbrook?
Yeah, the PTO will be having it as a discussion item on their Monday.
So what we'd like to do is, if people are interested, they would be corried, they'd be near that gate, because if you know the Beaverbrook playground, you know that it's surrounded by a fence, there's a gate, the traffic passes outside that gate, perhaps someone could stand at that gate if they felt, if the Beaverbrook felt that was the appropriate spot. We wouldn't want them to have to involve themselves in terms of playing dodgeball with kids at recess, they don't play dodgeball anymore, but to be a set eyes is a good thing. You sign up sheet and employ people.
Just because over the past week, I have gone and sat and watched recess, and I have noticed there are a ton of cars just coming in and out, in and out.
To that point, and I mean, I don't, I don't know, it's a public, it's a public driveway, I don't know what we can do to restrict...
And there's hundreds of kids, sneakers and lunches and gym clothes that are dropped off all day long, and there are employees that park there and then we use it for the vans, so that's why that gate with the supervision there has been in place.
Yeah.
And the gates always closed when there are kids at that playground.
Right.
So.
I just know the video wasn't that great, we couldn't see it, but I 100% believe my son and the other boy, and I know for a fact my son wouldn't lie to a police officer. So I know that it was very real to him, it was very real to me, and I really hope it's taken seriously. And I think, you know, you are.
I know that the Beaverbrook administration took it very seriously, because while they were in contact with that first police officer, they talked to me, they called me that evening. And I knew they were diving into the video that evening with the police department, and it was just timing in terms of you not getting that call.
I just didn't like, I mean, I will keep going on, I'll wrap it up, but the police had no idea about it when I called, they were like, "What? Oh, Beaverbrook's calling us now." So the incident happened at 2:18, the police weren't notified until at least 3:30.
There was an initial police officer who came, and then another police officer came, and I think it was the second police officer is the one who brought the information back to the police department, but we called earlier.
But I appreciate everything that you are going to do from here on out, and I appreciate you listening, and thank you all.
No, thank you, I see plenty of elementary school moms, too, feel free to stay, we're going to be talking about the report cards for next year, so you're all welcome to hang out for as long as you want. So thank you, thank you for taking the time. Is there anybody else who would like to speak, open meeting, in part of the hearing of visitors? Okay, seeing nobody, I'm going to move on to the reading and approval of records. First up, or only up, is our minutes from our meeting on January 7th. After the committee has a chance to review it, I'll be looking for a motion to approve
I'll make a motion to approve in minutes.
A second.
All in favor?
All right.
Up first on the docket is our principal's report, Dr. Sullivan. While Dr. Sullivan is making way up here, I wanted to mention, she's announced her retirement effective September 30th, 2020. I want to thank you, Dr. Sullivan, for your time, 35 years in education, all in Abington, if I get this wrong, blame him. The last 15 years as principal of Abington High School. The last 15 as principal at the high school. Well, thank you very much, I wanted to make sure I was recognized.
It's been a really wonderful experience, appreciate all the opportunities I've had. Again, I started at 12, obviously, so I could retire this young. As a history teacher and business teacher and foreign language teacher, and the back in the day when it was, "Would you like a job? We have this." "Sure, I can do that." And then, you know, evolved to, you know, just history and history department head, business department head, just the principal, principal, so I've learned a great deal, and it's been wonderful, the relationships I formed, I'll miss, that's the most important thing, I think, but I'm pretty excited about the possibility of getting back in the classroom at the college level, and workshops and conferences and writing, sleeping late.
I know you stopped playing time, but congratulations on the announced retirement, and look forward to the next, I can't do that math that fast, eight months or so, seven months?
Yes, yes, there'll be, I know you can talk about the transition tonight, so whatever I can do to help.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sure. So tonight, my task is to present a program of studies, and typically, I ask you, after school council has reviewed what we're looking at for programming, to add to the program of studies for students to select classes, and this is the first time in the 15 years I'm not asking for new courses. So I thought that it was appropriate that I sort of explained, and what, you know, where we are, that we're not asking for new courses, and asked Laura to give you, because a good reason to retire is my math was a little off, so I fixed it and gave that to you. The only thing we've done for our program of studies is the first sheet here, this is addressed to Kristen Ferrioli and Sarah, and to the guidance counselors, they are just changing course numbers, adding sections, for example, the English Language Education, that's a new name because the Department of Education changed the name, it used to be English as a second language, so we're just trying to conform to keep up with the department there. It's not a new course. The AP Art and Design, it says it's a new course, but again, that's an AP College Board change of name, so in order for our students to be able to register for an AP portfolio submission, we want to make sure that we're in line with what the course is called. We can still do it with that name, but it just takes a little more paperwork for them. And Concert Band, Concert Choir, those are not new courses, but we have always had Concert Band as Concert Band for four years. Freshmen could take Concert Band, a sophomore could take Concert, and they could take it for four years, and we're really looking to really sort of delineate and differentiate at some level with maybe a beginner's or advanced expectations, add a little more to what are the expectations when you're in your third year, for example, of band or chorus, and hopefully, that will, you know, make the transcript a little more, you know, neat to it. And some of the others are just grade changes, Physical Science was just grade 10, Chemistry was just 10 and 11, so actually, no new courses, but these are the kinds of changes you would see.
Okay.
On that part. The next was the, just a program impact that I thought, we did this for school council, and thought that that was pretty significant, and I changed it to, because this I had six years ago, in 1450, and that was the wrong data, it was 15, 16, it was five years ago, so I think it's important to understand the programming impact, why we're not offering new courses, and that's with a 42% enrollment increase in five years, the way that we are mitigating increased student enrollment is, so if 35 students come into grade nine, we're going to add a section of English 9, maybe even two sections of English 9, and that continues, you know, for math, history, science, so the elective programming has to be reduced because there's no one to teach those classes, right? So that's really what is happening here and what has happened. There are some other things, obviously, like, you know, sharing the cafeteria with the middle school, the broadness of the increase in enrollment in such a quick period of time, short period of time. I thought the department has, this is how we're taking on the increase in enrollment, the department has teaching more classes, obviously, I think that that impacts our ability to review, write, develop curriculum, to do evaluations that they have been doing. We're asking more of them, and some of the other things don't get done as well, and to me, that's pretty significant, I think it's also pretty significant in the NEAS gear that we are managing to keep up with this, we're asking a lot of people. We're doubling the virtual high school courses, so went from 22 years ago, this year we're 30, next year we're going to ask for 40, it does cost money, buy the seat, that's how we're mitigating virtual high school courses, the student could take an elective that we don't offer. We added more lockers, added more desks, I told you about the lunches, we're stipending all of our specialists, so art and health, wellness, PE, they're all teaching 6, they get a stipend in their contract for teaching the 6. So they, you know, have, that's a busy, busy day for them, and add the number of students that they have. Sports teams, I also added an exhibit for you to look at with the increase in expectations, and it's awesome to have so many kids playing, it truly, truly is, and I think it says a lot about culture broadly, but that comes at a cost with, you know, the just the scheduling pieces, the buses piece, and the refs, the refs, the building, you know, the spaces, the fields, the courts, et cetera. Guidance councils, we have an increase, those are, you know, 25% more, I mean, less time per student if you add them up by what they have to do. I just thought it was important that people see how we are mitigating for that large increase. The little chart I gave you, I think was probably the most telling, in the sense of at the bottom, the last chart there is, is having the high school program in 2014, 15, that's where, due to the numbers exactly, about 155 sections we were offering, and 2019, 20, we have 171 sections of classes, so we have to offer more sections, can't offer that many electives, and you see that the electives, we had 34 different electives in 1450, and we only have 25 now. The things are changing too, as you look at, there were 28 co-taught sections, so our special education population, to support the special education population, we changed up our service model, and now we have 60 co-taught sections, which is how we're hiring parish tutors to be the co-teachers in those classes. It was really a dive for us to just provide some information, and it was for us, like, how is this working, how are we, you know, managing this, but that's kind of how we do it.
Yeah.
And then the last part really is Appendix A, it says, and we are, we decided at school council to move these courses that have traditionally, they're elective courses, to move them as an appendix, rather than keep them in the department as if we were offering them to students, we believe that it was a little, not as transparent as it should be, that we would like to offer them, but since they weren't running this year, it is highly unlikely we'd be able to run them next year as well. They can be moved back and forth, and as I said, they are not expected to run in 2020. If there was all of a sudden a flood, you know, and somebody said, "Hey, I really wanted, you know, this particular class," but suppose they asked, they said, "We really want public speaking," well, if that's in the English department, I've got to say, my English teachers are full with the required English courses, so we can't offer that. That's really all I have?
Okay.
Anything I can answer or explain?
Will you remind me, I have a question?
Sure.
Just looking at all of it, I, my hope is that we will figure out a way to alleviate some of these or all of these situations at some point over the next couple of years. Will you remind me, for department heads, there are a couple of things that jump out at me most, but just knowing what it takes to write those evaluations, how much time it takes to get into the classroom, observe the teachers, have those conferences, the pre and post conferences, follow-ups, and write the reports. How many teachers does each department head evaluate, and what is the supervisory to teaching ratio? What FTE are department heads?
Right, so we have four department heads, math, English, science, and history. The others, specialists, are directors and they don't evaluate. So the four department heads evaluate, and they evaluate typically five to six teachers at the high school level, and they're seven through 12, so they also evaluate at the middle school, so they're observing, and I think maybe there's three in each of those areas in the middle school, that they are also observing, writing formatives and summatives and feedback.
Who is, you said, English?
English, math?
Math.
History?
History.
Science.
Who evaluates the other areas?
Principal and assistant principal.
Okay. And who does the vertical alignment for those subjects?
Department heads.
So in subjects like art or world language?
The directors, so they are directors, but they don't have evaluation, yes, and they don't have evaluation responsibilities, I think they have one free, one extra free class.
So they're more like a lead teacher?
Yep, they have their own prep for teaching and one period for curriculum review, writing, vertical alignment.
This might be a question for you, Peter, but when we built the new high school, we knew that, middle high school, we knew that it would be appealing to, for people to maybe stay, we knew enrollment would increase. How did, expected versus what actually has come to fruition, how have we done, what has happened?
I want to thank you so much for asking me this question, because I love, I don't like the answer, but I love saying it. We asked MSBA, we petitioned MSBA, we wrote letters to MSBA to build us a school that was larger than this school, that they would support, because the demographics that were done at the time indicated we would be a little less than what we have now, we're doing better than the demographics, we're, so the answer to your question is, we have more students coming than anticipated, and we knew we were going to get more students than anticipated. The reason is because previously, Abington had large numbers of families that were leaving us at the middle school level and getting either a vocational education or a private school education. And so we knew that more than any other system that was doing this work with MSBA, we were going to capture more of those students here at the high school, they were going to stay with us, because that's the trend. Because that's the trend that our colleagues told us we would experience in other districts. So we went back to them and tried to get larger, more square.
Went and met with them.
Went and met with them. We, I want to say it was, I mean, we fought for every square foot we could get. And so this is as big as they would help us build. And that's why I like that you asked that question. Because why in the world, after we built this school, wouldn't we have factored in for this many students? That's the answer.
You're not going to like my next question.
Can I add to that? I think too that there are, the transition piece, so that students are no more, I don't think, they're saying, at sixth grade, I don't have to go to another school, so I might as well. If I have to make a decision, then I'm going to consider other locations, but I might as well stay. And the same again in eighth grade. Typically, they were moving schools anyway.
Yep.
And now I think that we're holding more, that they don't have to make a transition.
Which is awesome.
Dr. Sullivan, sorry.
Yeah. No, the only other question I've related to the one you just answered is, it's unfortunate, obviously, that our begging resulted in, sorry, but no. But like, what long-term planning has to happen now? Or what do we, what are our options? Because five years at 42% is not sustainable.
And I have one question that ties in there, if I can just throw it in. So my question would be, if you could rub the lamp and ask the genie to give you what you think we need, what, around what FTE would not be the perfect solution, but would make it better?
I think every department would ask for more staff, you know, every year. We don't have a place to put them anyway. So we've already been, you know, sort of throwing around ideas about what could you do? We talked about library space, you know, where would you put people? And we have fewer classrooms in this building than we had in the old building. So we knew that. So we have people sharing rooms all the time. But as the numbers get, you know, bigger and bigger, there's no place to go. We're doing learning centers in cafeteria. It's not such a great idea. And but we've, we've been pushed to that place. So I don't have an FTE for you. I think every department would have an argument for why they would like to increase staff and what things they would offer.
But at least one in every department, probably.
That would, that would help.
And Jackie, to answer your question, actually, I appreciate that question also. I like that question. So we've already done another demographic study with NESDEC. We have those numbers, we have those results. Next year will be the last large gulp of students the Abington High School should have to take because we've graduated smaller classes and now larger classes coming up. So we should balance out at the end of next year. You'll, on top of this, you'll, you're shouldering for another 30 to 40-plus students beyond what you have in this building right now. You're planning for that now with the current scheduling and scenarios we have. And that demographic study is, every year that goes by, we just did it. But every year that passes by, you get to check and see if it was right or not. Because it measures the number of housing starts in Abington. It measures the number of students you have. It measures by birth year, the number of children born each year. And it takes all that with a demographer and anticipates what you're going to have. It actually shows that we're going to level. And we don't know we're going to level until we see that because the unknown is really the housing starts. There are all kinds of things that go into housing starts, like seniors move into a house that's more manageable for them, and then their larger house is occupied by a family when they move. So the age of your community also plays into this. And you can't anticipate how many families you're going to get. Because of that, that's not a housing start. The housing starts are for, you can anticipate some of it. If they're two-bedroom homes or three-bedroom homes, or they're meant for empty nesters that commute. There's still people moving into those homes with kids. And so that's really an unknown until you see how that plays out.
Is there a point that people step in, people being like, like, we have to educate everybody that is at school age, whether or not, and there are like capacity for buildings? So would there be potential that we would need more space somewhere down the road?
Not in terms of providing the quality education, we want to provide yes. In terms of fire codes and things like that, we're good. It's, it's really about the flexibility to offer the program studies and the things that you want to offer kids that are sacrificed. You want to have science in the science lab, you have art in the art room. And even though we're sharing cafeterias, the students aren't together at the same time. They're, they're, they use that cafeteria at different times. But that creates conflicts for the administration in both buildings because I can't have lunch at X time because I got the high school kids in there, and vice versa.
It's just one of those things that does tie your hands to a lot of creative scheduling pieces, space issues.
Dr. Sullivan, I was going to add, just from my, the first year in this building was 17, 18, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's, it's a problem. It's, it's, it's a better problem than not having enough kids because we were down to just over, just between 1800 and 1900 a while ago. And that, that was awful, watching families migrate out of Abington. It's awesome and exciting that we're so popular.
So for next year, the graduating class this year is roughly, I'll say, 120-ish or so?
I think there's, are they small enough?
It's about 120, 130.
All right, so around 120.
This year's class.
So the eighth grade class, and I just know this because I have kids in eighth grade, so I'm fairly confident of the numbers.
It's exactly 120.
Right. So the kids that are in eighth grade right now, there's like 184 approximately?
186 as of January 1st.
Okay, so I'm close. So those kids, so we're losing 120, we're getting 186 coming in.
Some of those kids will go to vocational or private schools?
But that's still like 60.
Plus 50 or so, anyway.
So, I mean, we've looked at historically how it's gone. We haven't been really losing that many. So like, at the high school, like, are we prepared for that? Like.
Did I mention I was retiring?
Nice exit, Dr. Sullivan. But I mean, that's, that's a significant, I mean, obviously, we all must know this, but I'm just bringing it to light, like, that's a significant amount of kids coming in that.
That's sort of why the program is not offering any new courses.
So I know that, obviously, we've had discussion among the school council. I mean, I have mixed thoughts about it. I mean, it's unfortunate that we're not offering new classes. I understand why we're not offering new classes. And I feel like at our meeting, we talked of this frustration that these courses, but we're still there. And then, you know, there's a couple of students that are on the school council and they're talking about how they want to take this AP class, but they couldn't because there was no one to teach it. And there wasn't enough, like, interest in that class per se. So those are the classes that are, you know, not being offered. And then we said, as far as like the transparency, these courses are on the course of, like, on the program of studies, but there's no one there. So I said, I said, that's, like, these kids are trying to take these classes, but they can't take them because there's no one to take them. So moving them so they're not, during that appendix if they come back in. But the unfortunate thing about it is, I don't, unless we get this huge amount of money, I don't see these classes coming back for a long time. Because once we get these 180 and the subsequent classes after that are all like 160, so then we are leveling off. So like, when will we ever get new classes? Like, when are we going to get new program of studies? And I feel like the classes that are being left off, a lot of them, well, they're electives, but they're like the AP classes. But I know we can do the virtual classroom, we're making it work. But I mean, just to bring it up to some of these people that don't have high school is just to know, like, that's like reality, and it stinks.
Yeah, have to make a decision when that comes up. You know, there might be nine students want to take an AP Euro course. And there's 32 coming in, we need a freshman English class, you know, or history class. You have to weigh that. And that happens every year. You're doing that every year for all the electives. So narrowing the electives, you know, moves students to a direction where you can, where you can teach them, rather than 15, 16, 14. You put 30 in this elective and not have three at 14, 15, 16.
So my answer to your question is, it depends on the housing market. Because we know what we're getting in the next five years into kindergarten because we know what the birth rate was. We don't know for sure, but we know about what it's going to be. We've got budget priorities at the elementary level this year. Because we do not want those classes to get close to 30. We've got kindergarten we're worried about next year. Grade two, we're worried about next year. And those are children that are learning how to read. So if they level off, then you can shift your resources to other places to make sure. Because I know that you're working hard to, you have a competitive program here. I, it's tight, you're crowded, you're working hard. There's more students than fit easily into the schedule. But I don't want people to think that you don't have a great program of studies. It's.
Oh, we definitely do. I mean.
It's okay.
Could be better.
The virtual high school is helping.
It helps.
And so you're doing the things that you can do. And in future budget cycles, things go well, you can shift the priorities. But I would recommend to you that those decisions happen after you find out what your class sizes are at the elementary level.
I think, you know, we've added things over the years. We've added a computer science department, you know, so things have come into play. But we've, you know, we have, we're still a one-language school. We teach Spanish. And so it could be much more competitive in a lot of ways.
One more question for you. So 15 years as principal, 35 here, you know us well. And you have, you're going. So what would you, what would you, what would you, what would you, what are your priority? Like, you've been here at the helm for a long time. Like, what are the things you want us as the committee to be thinking about that you're saying, gosh, I really, it's important for Abington High School in the future to do or change or be this? Like, anything pressing that we should be thinking about? Don't look at him.
Terry's going to say what she wants, and she thinks anyway.
I think, you know, in the 35 years, and particularly in the 15 years, one of those figures mentioned that in three years, the nurse visits have doubled. And I think, and I know you have subcommittees and you, and this is not, you know, anything you haven't heard before, but particularly the social emotional needs of students is like nothing I've ever experienced. And I think we're very, very good at it in terms of taking it so seriously. Our student support teams meet weekly. We are all over it and take pride in it. It is wearing, emotionally draining. And I think that Abington has a very strong, the strong momentum and spirit and push for the whole child. So I don't, I don't think you need to do anything different because I think it's already there. But it's hard in the trenches. And when I said that, you know, I really, I think that the teachers and the support staff are doing wonders, given what has transpired in the last several years and what they have picked up. And in our budget, we did ask for additional, an office clerical staff. Think about 42% more students, more medical needs, the billing needs, the, all of that, the attendance and the tardies is coming, you know, our way constantly. But the bureaucracy of education has also made me say, I'm ready. The bureaucracy of the data piece, the MCAS piece, the, you know, I'm, I'm more, I'm a social justice person. I'm not the person who wants to sit and do the data piece to say that we're doing well. I see other data points more valuable. I'm going to point to Aaron Johnson, for example. There's a lot of things happening that are very, very positive that you're not going to find on an Abington Boston Globe front page, you know, story about what the scores are. I think that's special and unique. And I feel like over the years, for the most part, the school committee, whoever's on, has always given us that, maybe it's just autonomy and respect to say, yeah, try this. We've changed our schedule many times to add that common planning time piece, the wave week Wednesday piece, things that we've done to, to support students, to add in the bridge block program. I feel like we've gotten a lot of support from the community to say, you're doing well by us. So, yeah, go ahead, try this, see what you think. And it doesn't feel like we're always getting beat up by, oh my God, that's crazy. It's, so I appreciate that, and I hope that that continues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm just going to get your proposal revisions, hopefully.
Yes.
So I'll be looking for a motion to approve the revisions to Abington High School's program of studies for the 2020, 21 school year as presented by Dr. Sullivan on the first page that we discussed.
Can I make a motion?
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Dr. Sullivan, thank you. Again, I'm sure we'll see you plenty more times, but thank you again officially.
Just a couple more times. I have an update on NEAS. The English teacher, Kim Akew, and Laura Luco actually are the co-chairs of the NEAS steering committee in the process. So I asked Kim, if you want, just to update that briefly.
Hello. As you know, we had our, excuse me, NEAS collaborative conference visit in the fall of 2018. And they gave us their report about a year ago. It was February 2019. And part of that report had 10 recommendations for us. And the objective was, make progress towards these before they come again this September, for the decennial visit. In your packets, you have the work that we've done so far, the product at least so far, the draft of it, on the number one recommendation, which was the develop a vision of the graduate. The way it's worded, all the recommendations is, develop a vision of the graduate, core values, and beliefs about learning, as well as means to measure individual and school-wide progress. We came up with a rating that does not meet their standard. And that's one of the foundational elements for them, so it was a big deal. The reason we did not meet the standard was, it was a new standard. The vision of the graduate replaces the former mission and expectation. So it's a whole new standard. So we had to develop that. The way it is worded, per their learning culture standard, is that, as a school, we must develop a vision of the graduate that includes the attainment of transferable skills, knowledge, understandings, and dispositions necessary for future success. So one of the first things we did when we got this recommendation was we realized that this has to be a shared vision of the community. So we felt like we needed to survey all the stakeholders. So we did that last February. We surveyed parents, current students, faculty and staff, not just here, but district-wide. We're invited to participate, community members, as well as recent graduates. Once we got that information, there was a small team, Laura Luco, myself, and Christina Park, who attended a two-day seminar sponsored by NEAS that helped you take that information that you gathered from your stakeholders and develop them into four categories that represent the cognitive, personal, and interpersonal competencies that students should have when they graduate. What we ended up with at that point, by taking the survey results and the guidance from the seminar, are listed on that draft that you have. So critical thinker, engaged participant, socially competent contributor, and self-aware individual. When we brought those back to the faculty, we worked with them to develop related indicators and corresponding rubrics that you also have for each of the competencies. As a school and district, our goal is to foster multiple opportunities or pathways for students to develop these competencies. Discussions continue about including the vision of the graduate and developing the district's vision for 2021 and beyond. District administrators are starting to look at these competencies and what they would look like at their grade level. And part of the process going forward would be for us to develop benchmarks and agreed-upon measurable outcomes. The expectation when they come back in the fall is that we don't necessarily have those in place, but that we have developed what the vision looks like and that we would have the next two to five years as part of our school growth plan to figure out how do we measure these. Does anybody have questions about the vision of the graduate?
I didn't see the rubric in here. Just, I'm just curious if that's.
Oh, is it the ICAN statement? The ICAN statement. We decided not to have, at this point of the draft, you know. Exactly. We felt like we would just show it as, you can, I can do this. There's clearly a lot of work that needs to be done in terms of how to measure it. Where does it start? Do we start, you know, looking at one with an incoming class? And then build that class, that sophomore year, we would focus on the next, and the next. But those are discussions to have over the next two to five years.
Got it, thank you.
As far as the rest of the recommendations go, we followed the same process, that whole idea of an action plan, with some steps to be handled prior to the decennial visit, and then ongoing through the next two, five, seven. It's a 10-year cycle, so we would continue working on that.
Can I just add that we thought this was such a good idea, the vision of a graduate? I think you're aware, across the district, all of the schools are developing, the principals with their faculties and staff and school councils, the vision of a graduate as students transition from building to building in Abington so we can create that ramp.
Start from the beginning. Thank you very much. Update on elementary placards, Mr. Hawes and Ms. Thompson?
Hey, Al. So we came to you guys first in November. For anyone that wasn't here, we are looking to really update and best represent what we're actually teaching and reporting on in our classrooms and making sure that that's represented in our elementary report cards. Because to date, it's not. The current report card that you all recently received doesn't actually, with the level of depth that we're looking for, represent the standards that students are learning. It's been a while since there's been an update and quite frankly, there are many other surrounding districts, peer districts, et cetera, that have already adopted these and made these changes. So Julie and I and our teams have been working together throughout the fall in Inter to make sure that these updates sort of take out.
So our work to date is, in each school, we've had a team of teachers and myself at Beaverbrook and Jonathan at Woodsdale work to identify standards for a standard-based report card that reflect the focus standards of each grade level. We developed grading scales that help to give some detail as to the mastery level of the students on each standard. And we, as an administrative team, have reviewed and discussed updated report card progress reporting, timelines and requisite training that may be needed for our parents' information. We developed a parent survey, which went out yesterday. And we have started discussions with Aspen to see how we can integrate what we have as our draft so far, how that would look in Aspen and the changes that we make going forward based on feedback, how that would fit as well. The grading skills that we developed are up here, or you can see them, they're also in your packets. For the academic areas, we're measuring mastery towards the grade level end of year standard. So the student performs beyond the expected standard consistently and independently is a four, and that would be typically fairly rare. It would be someone who's above grade level consistently all the time in that standard. Students proficient with the standard consistently and independently is really what we're striving for by the end of the year on those standards. And number, the two would be they're progressing toward the standard, which would be something that most students would be bringing home on their report cards the first couple trimesters or the first trimester. That student is progressing towards that end of year standard and that is really what's expected at the beginning of the year because they haven't gotten there yet for the most part. And one would be student is making minimal progress toward the standard with support. So those would be for the academic areas. And then for kind of our skills that support learning, we would use the key consistently, sometimes and rarely for things such as self-advocates. The teacher would determine, does the student self-advocate consistently, sometimes or rarely? So that the parent could have reporting out on those work habits and social emotional skills.
So thinking of changing and overhauling our report card, there also needs to be an adjustment to what we're doing at the midpoint of each reporting period. And so we're looking at some changes to our progress reports as well. What we've covered so far really condenses what is already a sort of condensed reporting. Instead of, right now, there are consistently, sometimes never, that sort of type of language at each grade level. And each grade level's progress report looks a little bit differently. To really, again, to condense it, what we're trying to do at the midpoint would just be provide consistent concise statements of progress. So students are either... So here, making effective progress or not making effective progress. And really, the students who are making effective progress, especially at the midpoint, there isn't a need for comprehensive reporting at that time, given we will pre-providing a comprehensive report at the end of the sort of marking period. So progress report would look something similar to this, where the students who are making effective progress will note that. The students who are not, there's an opportunity in that comment box to sort of expand upon that rating. So it would be the expectation that if a student was in some need in a specific academic area, it would be marked as not making effective progress. And also some information would be provided by an educator to sort of give you a clue as to why.
So along with the proposed revision to the progress reports, we've also talked to some administrative team about our conference timeline. So what we thought and were proposing is that in trimester one, we would hold parent conferences in late October. Currently, this year, we held them in December after the first report card went home. So we're proposing that parent conferences, this is K to four, by the way, parent conferences are late October and there's no progress report for trimester one. The parent conference would replace that progress report. Then report card would go home late November, early December as it does now. The trimester two, there would be a progress report and that would come out approximately late January. And then a report card would be home mid-March-ish, about the same time as it does now. And then we would have another progress report in trimester three. And the end of year report card would go home at the end of school.
One of the other reasons we're talking about not progress reporting at that first benchmark in October or November is if you think about the way in which we described ratings towards standards, those standards are end-of-the-year standards. So given the fact that we've only really had students for about a month, the progress reporting that we'd be providing is not making much progress toward that standard for nearly all of our students. It just wouldn't be, it just doesn't give us an opportunity to really report out. The best report that we could give at that time, having just sort of met your kiddos, would be a conversational sort of report in the form of conference.
Quick question?
Sure.
I can't assume that most families go to conferences. For those that don't go to conferences, will a progress report be sent home?
Yeah, well, no, a progress report would not be sent home. However, some form of outreach.
Phone conversation.
Most of our parents do. And for those that don't, we still ask our team members to make sure that they're doing some type of outreach, phone or email, or trying to make sure that they get a secondary time set at any conference. So here's where we're at, this is our proposed timeline. We still have to fill in these items to sort of check off, but we are in February. So as you can see, this month, I mean, this fall, a lot of our sort of network was done already, building the drafts that I see in front of all of you guys, making sure that the standards, they don't represent every standard, by the way. They would not be, it wouldn't be possible to have all of the standards that our students are assessed on on a report. But these really represent the meat of what your students are learning, specific to each grade level. So we're here in February, we've sent out a survey. Rich Bukowski has met and sort of conversed with Val and they have given us some rough timelines on when they can reasonably execute all our draft. We have enough time for us to sort of play with that in the spring. We would hopefully have some teacher trainings, we will have some teacher trainings. For the year, we'll definitely have some teacher training as we start the year. Also, we want to make sure that the parents are informed about what we have in front of you. So we'll be planning something in the fall to sort of, if you get ready for the way in which the report card will be given.
Jonathan, what would the mock, run a mock report card, what would that involve?
That involves basically the finished draft coming from Aspen, Val and our student information system. And we need that in May because what we need to be able to do is our office staff needs to generate a report card as if we would at the reporting times, to see any glitches, to see the way the teachers themselves input those grades, to see the way it runs for us on the backend, to just sort of work any of that out. So it has to be a real live draft in order for us to do that.
Okay.
So there's a lot of sort of pieces that get them...
So, yeah, it doesn't involve teachers actually pretend, like having to, it's more a behind-the-scenes technology type thing?
Yeah, I think it's a little bit of both, we'll need some giddy bits.
Okay.
Well, teachers, I think, I don't know what you're asking, if they would be kind of piloting on service students and that we wouldn't be doing that.
Okay.
Just be entering grades in and, you know, for John Doe.
Yeah, I hear, yeah, yeah, okay. No, that makes sense. And I think, this is just me talking, parent info night, I think with, so I was a big proponent of the parent conferences moving to where they are now. I understand with this, it might move up some. I think with parent conferences occurring in October, even if it's late, I think it's important to try to get that parent info night done in September though. Because if you get too into it six weeks in, it can sometimes, I think September, people's minds are still freshening to get more parents showing up, hopefully in September.
One of the factors also is we don't want it to be too early. So we provide this information at the outset of the school year. The fall happens, a lot of happenings in schools, and then that first report card is not gonna come out until December. So we're giving information about the report card that you won't see until about three months later. So there has to be some sort of balance in between.
Gotcha.
And we'll have a sort of one-pager type of guide available for parents when the report card does come out that has more description of the descriptors and, you know, what does this mean?
Yeah, I think the biggest thing is gonna be people understanding that it's not a standard of where you should be at this point. The standard is where you should be in June the whole time.
Yeah.
That's gonna be, that's the biggest, I think, change.
For teachers and parents.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Guys have questions?
I have a couple. The progress report, I think you touched on this already, but the comment section. Currently, a lot of the comments that are written on the progress reports relate to curriculum. Like we're working on a student is doing great on narrative writing. I think you said this, but if a not making effective progress is checked, there'll be comments specific to the child, not necessarily the curriculum, right?
Yes.
Okay. Do you foresee, like how are the comments, are they pre-populated comments that teachers pick or do teachers enter their own comments now?
Depends on which interval. At the progress report, they're teacher-created. Within the formal report card, we are hearing that there can be a mix of, we see a bank of comments and then some, a text box with which the person could really be specific.
I think the comments are more vital in a progress report. As far, because I think the report card kind of gives you, and I was gonna piggyback, but I think you got it. It's almost, I feel like it should be a requirement. If you put not making effective progress, there needs to be comments in that box.
Yeah, we feel the same.
Okay.
The only other question I have is specific to the kindergarten report card. And I don't know if you guys already talked about this, like behind the scenes, but the, under foundational skills, I don't see a box or a line specific to phonemic awareness. And I just wonder or worry with the dyslexia legislation that passed and that we're going to have to be doing mandated screenings for kindergarteners in the area of phonemic awareness that, and it is, I don't know the standards, like I don't have them memorized, but I think there's going to be something that we are expected to teach specific that we may just, it's just a thought before they go to press that, where we're going to have mandated legislation and we're going to be asked to screen all of our kindergarteners and then re-screen anyone who doesn't pass, that we may want to report to families in some way specific to that foundational skill.
Okay, we noted that, could look into that, thank you.
I have a question. Why moving parent-teacher conferences to the end of October?
Well, as an administrative team, we talked about that. Rather than having that progress report, to have that face-to-face with parents earlier on, where the teacher can, you know, kind of give an update on how the student is transitioning and what they're seeing so far and things like that, to, just to kind of get that contact in a little earlier and have it in place of that progress report going home, you know, having maybe never met the parent.
Okay, it just feels like a long time, like October, not to never, you know, meet with a teacher again, but I know you can always ask.
Yeah, you can always ask, yeah.
Yeah, I think, yeah, most, I gotta, I mean, most of the teachers at the elementary level are willing to, to at least try to find a common time to meet, so. But, yeah, I was, I was, I was more, I liked it a little bit later, I thought of getting the chance to get to know them more. I felt like it was sometimes too early, but I think, and especially I think it's important that they, I know right now is one week after the other. One school has them one week, one's has them the next, so I think it's important to keep them close together, but not the same week.
Yeah.
And having, and we've talked about this again probably here at the table and then I know in many conversations, like in other meetings, but we're one of the only districts that has that one, once-a-year conference, which is like, it drives me insane. And we've talked about the why is that, why do we not have it twice a year? And it, there's so many pieces, money-related and contracts that we honor, you know, through the union. So I just, I don't know if there's any, that's just my, my hope would be that at some point we could move towards a couple of times a year to have conferences. It's always been a job expectation for me in three districts now. And, you know, it's a night away from my family, but it seems important to, to update more than just initially and then to have face time with people more than once.
Will maybe longer? More time with teachers than five-minute conferences, we've had a little longer time?
We would probably look at the schedule and see how that works. I always think the longer, longer period of time that I have a discussion about your student and your child is important.
We bring you the active speed day.
Any luck?
It was interesting.
We have speed ducky and teachers and...
That is also something, but it's also contractually tied. Those conference times, they're part of their teaching contract too.
But they did...
We could talk till ten PM.
They did shrink, didn't they, the times? Because I feel like initially, yes, you're nodding, I know you're nodding. What's happened?
Our population increased, right? We have more kids to report out.
So we're gonna have 2.5 minutes?
Sounds like it.
Okay.
I do think too, it comes down to the teacher knows if there's something happening with the student. And every teacher I know is super amenable to meeting with parents at any point. So the best conference is kind of the one that's not on a scheduled night.
Yeah, right.
But happening around the time that the issue is arising. So I think as parents, we can also be proactive and hopefully have that rapport with the teacher that when something comes up, we can go in at any time to have that conference.
Here's a tip for middle school, people going to middle school someday. Don't do the elementary thing where you back your conferences up, like because I made that rookie mistake. And you, there are five-minute buzzers and if they run late, you can't get to the other conference. So you almost want to create windows of space.
Yeah, alternate your time.
Yeah, so you have time. What's that? Yeah. It's not easy for any of us or you guys, I know.
Per subject. So you have, like, you're there like for a good hour at least anyway. Because you go, but if you, as they get older, you want to coordinate them on the same floor, like maybe, or near each other? Because like then you're running back and forth, it's easier if they're running late, you can just run to the next classroom than running downstairs or down the hall. Little tip, there you go. Store that.
Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Hawes and Ms. Thompson?
Just to thank you, I know this is above and beyond the work you do in the school day, that this is not on-the-job time that this gets done. So thank you to everybody who helped with putting this together, because I know it's time-consuming.
Yeah, I do too.
Yeah, we're proud of it, it looks good. It feels like your, there should be no doubt when you see the report card in December, you have a really clear and comprehensive picture of where your kid stands.
Yes, definitely.
So that's a big change from where we are now.
And on top of, you haven't done this in isolation, you've been inclusive with many groups and people and checked things along the way, which is, as Jack was saying, there's a lot of work that goes in this. But also, there's a lot more work when you're so inclusive, but you need to be, so thank you.
Thanks, thank you guys. Uh, he doesn't need to. Up next is a consideration of additional homeschool requests. Mr. Robbins, you don't have to come, you can if you want, but we have the information we need in front of us. You don't have to come up or anything like that. And listen, does anybody have any questions, Mr. Robbins, regarding, and I know it's only so much. So I'll be looking for a motion to approve the additional home education program for the current, for the current school year? Mr. Robbins, the current school year?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, as recommended. I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Um, up next, Mr. Schaefer.
So, uh, the first item I have is, is the selection process, uh, for a principal at Abington High School. Um, you know, we have, um, large shoes to fill and, um, we, it's a critical position in, in the, in the life of the Abington Public Schools. So what you have here is, um, an outline of the steps, um, and the timeline. So, uh, I'll just start by saying what we would do, uh, tomorrow, we'll advertise and, um, we'll advertise for, um, what's our deadline? We're going to start interviewing candidates on March 2nd, so it'll basically be out for the month of February. We're going to establish, the next step after we advertise though, would be establishing a screening committee. While that's happening and simultaneously, what I'll be doing is, um, meeting with, I'm going to be with the students, the student leadership at Abington High School, um, school council, the boosters, um, developing also a survey to go out to all families. Uh, and that survey will, um, so while, while we're establishing this screening committee and putting this together simultaneously, we'll also be, um, getting some data. Basically, the survey is going to focus around three primary questions, and that is, what would you, um, like to keep about Abington High School, the way it is right now? Uh, what would you like to change about Abington High School? And what characteristics are you looking for in the new leader of Abington High School? We will take that information and then we will work with the screening committee. Uh, I'll give all that data to the screening committee so they know, um, what the community and the school stakeholders are looking for. Um, it'll also be something that the new person will be able to take in terms of an entry plan. They'll have that data in terms of what people are looking for in, in the new leader. And, um, continuing on though with the screening committee, um, we'll review the job description, we'll review the, the information, the data that was provided by people. Um, we're going to interview, and we're going to create an interview, uh, set of questions. Um, we will, uh, review, um, the paperwork that's provided to us of all the viable candidates. We'll select candidates for interviews, we'll interview hopefully the week of March 2nd. Then, uh, site visits will likely be conducted for finalists. I will say to the committee what I say to each of the committees, I, I need to ask you to please provide me the candidates that you know you'll be able to support in this role, that you feel, you feel good about. Um, there will be a different order of people coming to me in terms of, you know, one, people, people may think that this person is number one, this person's number two, but what's most important to me is that I have candidates that, that people feel, um, comfortable with, that they're excited about, um, minimally know they'll be able to support, um, that the person walks on water and, um, they're, honestly, it's, it's such an important position in the Abington Public Schools. Um, then there'll be the, the background checks that go on, the paperwork that's provided will be checked, references will be checked, but also conversations take place behind the scenes with anybody that will talk to us about candidates, that work will be done. And then hopefully, I'll be able to secure someone by the end of March and introduce them to the committee at that, at that meeting. Um, there are a number, there are a couple of districts that are out looking right now, and our timing is pretty good, but I don't want to wait any longer because, um, I don't want to lose, I don't want to lose good people. The pool's only going to get smaller from here on out, not bigger. So I'll also be looking, you can see, uh, toward the bottom of the page, the people I'll be, I'll be asking to, to join us on this screening committee. Left a little bit of flexibility here, as one central office person, two administrators, I'd like to have a probably a middle school person, an elementary person, three high school parents, one to, one to two high school students, um, depending on, um, the leadership configuration that, that Dr. Sullivan is able to provide us in terms of who, who would participate, one or two, um, and then also, uh, one to two school committee members depending on, um, how many people want to be a part of that and what the committee decides.
Um, okay, so at this time, do you mind if I take it? So at this time is, I'm just going to ask, is any of the school committee members interested in, um, participating in this thing?
I'll do it.
So three of you are interested?
Yeah, my, I can say I'm not interested, only if, my only caveat here is where we're going to have three high school parents and one to two Abington School Committee members, um, if the Abington School Committee members that are appointed have high school children, can we open up the parent population to maybe be like two high school parents, one middle school parent? Like, I just, I don't want the only parents on the committee to be parents of high school students, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does.
Okay.
We've done that in other searches, we could, we could add.
So I, I can.
We can't just use one of our, Lisa can't be on there as a high school parent and then you two as school committee members, though we can't do that, cause that's three members on there in the end. Do you know what I mean?
No, I don't mean that.
Okay, I know what you're saying, I know what you're saying.
I just mean, like, if you two end up doing it, which would be great, you are both going to have high school students, right? And then we're going to have three additional highs, high school parents for a total of five parents of high school.
Cause we're already high school parents.
Yeah, like, I just think that we need to have some voices from parents who are younger.
So how would you feel about two high school parents and one middle school parent? Instead of a three, I'd make that a two and a one.
Yeah, I mean, how does everyone else feel about it? What do you?
No, it makes sense, I hadn't thought about it, honestly, but yeah, that makes sense, I hadn't thought about it.
I'm actually wondering, like, if that's enough, if, if, I don't know, and I could be swayed either way, I just.
I mean, you run into, I mean, unless you're going to swap two and one, you do run into trying to appease thirteen people's schedule for certain days though, too.
Yeah.
At a certain point.
So we're going to have an, when we say we're going to have an elementary administrator on there, it's going to be someone representing K four?
Yes.
Do, will we have any, I guess, does it matter? I'm just thinking, will we have any parents that represent K four? Does it matter? Does it not matter? I don't, I'm just thinking as this is like, for some reason in my brain, the principle of the high school to me filters, like, you're, you're receiving everybody's, the product of everybody's work.
Yeah, it's the truth, yeah.
So there's, it would be good to have more representation, like you're saying, like an elementary parent. The only, the only piece is the committee just keeps getting larger and larger and larger as we add people and it becomes difficult to, to get the work done in a timely fashion.
So you're thinking two high school parents and one middle school parent?
Yeah. How many members of this, parents, parent members of the school council, Dr. Sullivan?
There are three.
There are three.
I'm sorry.
So we go, we go, there are three members of the high school, um, school council that are parents, so we go through, we go three, we go three and one.
So are you saying that anyone on the high, any parent on the high school school council would be part of the committee?
They'd be invited first, and if we couldn't fill the slot, then we'd open it up. And again, I, I think I've talked about this before because we've done searches recently, I feel the hold into that process because those are the elected people by the other parents.
So yeah, but just maybe adding a middle school person then would be, would help to balance it a little.
So do you think if you and Danielle did it, then you would be a middle school represented by the school commi, like, do you versus just?
Yeah, I, I just don't.
I think you said it can't be three of us.
No, I know, but I wouldn't do it if, like, if she.
I actually don't, I can tell you, if, if it balances out in some other way, count me out of putting my name in.
What I would ask for you to do is have at least one non-high school parent on there. If you get, if it ends up being two because the high school parents can do it, then there's two non-high school parents. But of the three parents, at least one of them is non-high school.
And I, I am middle school right now.
Your, your school committee member, though.
Right.
So I'm, I'm talking about the high school, the, the line where it says three high school parents.
So one central office, two administrators, it would be two high school parents, one middle school parent.
Yeah.
Three, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's good. Sorry to be.
Nope, it's good. We, it, we had done that in other searches because obviously a middle school person's going to be coming to high school.
And yeah, and I guess what I was getting at is if you don't even have the two high school parents, then feel free to take a second parent from the middle school. Do you know what I mean? Kind of thing?
Well, if we, once we open it up to the larger high school population.
Okay, that's true, okay, yeah, okay, all right. So, um, is it Lisa and Danielle? Did you both want to do it? Jackie?
Do you feel?
Yeah, trust you guys.
Okay, so, Peter, I'm going to, um, have Lisa and Danielle be the two members of the school committee.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions on this? Unless Dr. Sullivan wants to rescind her letter. Okay.
Cricket, check your tickets.
Whatever. Um, so I also have a health curriculum delivery update for you. So, um, I want to thank Wendy Kaple, I want to thank Lisa Augusta, I want to thank Jackie Abrams, I want to thank Kate Casey more than anyone for all the work that she's done because she's met with, um, different school committee members, she's met with, uh, Kate has met with, uh, school councils, she's met with the Health and Wellness Committee, she's met with anybody that would talk to her about these changes.
Fifth and sixth grade teachers.
Yep, everyone. And, um, so the change I have in the health curriculum delivery for you is that, uh, currently you're aware that in fifth and sixth grade, the, there's a separation of students for the human development, um, module, and, uh, boys go in one room, girls go in the other room, and they don't learn about, they learn about that one gender. Um, the changes that are occurring are updating the delivery of the information. Instead of a movie, it's, um, it's more thoughtfully done, and there will be one lesson in grade five, and this year, grade six, where they will be separated, and they will learn about both sexes. And then in the subsequent years, the grade five will be separated only, and then grade six will be together, and seventh, eighth, and ninth, the, the students will learn. Um, currently in seventh, eighth, and ninth, they are mixed now. Um, that will, we will continue with that for the human development lessons and, and modules. Um, there is an opt-out letter for people, there's always been the opportunity to opt out, but we're going to do a better job of highlighting that for people in terms of, um, their ability to opt out. My hope is that no one opts out, um, but I certainly respect that they do, because that means that they as a family are taking care of that topic. Um, my fear is though, that if people aren't taking care of that topic with their children, they're learning it on their, on the world wide web. Um, and the responsible approach to this topic is, um, obviously the best way forward for our, for our students. Uh, the, the mixing, um, to the extent that we can, other than that one fifth grade lesson, um, is important because, uh, these topics are certainly private in the life of an individual, but they shouldn't be taboo, because that's how we, uh, lead ourselves down the road where people are victimized, uh, later for, uh, things like sexual assaults, uh, that they're afraid to report because those things aren't discussed. Not having any empathy or understanding of what, um, both genders, uh, are going through in terms of human development, uh, doesn't make any sense either. Um, and so in a thoughtful, comprehensive way, in a responsible way, um, Kate has done a great job at putting all of this together, and, um, this is a little bit of a shift from the last committee meeting that we had, um, where people were going to be exclusively together from grade five, um, really listening to a broader audience. Uh, the decision was, uh, especially in grade five, for that introductory human development lesson, that, that one lesson, um, that they should be separated. And again, that'll take place this year in grades five and six, because the sixth graders haven't had this yet, and then sort of grandfather that out, and it'll be grade five in the following year. Does that make sense?
Yes.
When do they have this lesson? Do you agree with that?
I'm sorry, who?
When do they have it?
When does who have?
When do the fifth graders have it?
Uh, it'll take place this year.
Spring.
In another, another month? Another month, notices are going to start to go out.
Good, okay, so they'll be together for the first lesson, so do you care if I speak for a second, I'm sorry?
Spring's fine, I just wanted to know.
Yeah, so they'll be together for the first lesson, and then the second and third lessons, they'll be separated, and the first separated lesson, they'll learn about their own bodies, then the second separated lesson, they'll learn about the other genders' bodies, and then they'll come back together, so.
So the coed is really, um, hormones, body development, things like that, and then the anatomy. It gets deeper when you get into the anatomy of the human reproductive system, that's when they'll be separate, and then, um, you know, the lesson on fertilization, fertilization, they'll be back together. But those are, um, those are more, um, form function and cell division, to be quite honest with you. They get into those, um, the human sexuality piece in later grades, if that makes sense.
And we had more conversation than you would ever want to know about puberty behind the scenes, um, but something that I think is worth saying that we talked a lot about is just like the sixth grade piece in the future. So they will be separated this year, and correct me if I'm saying this wrong, they will be separated this year as sixth graders to learn about their bodies individually. In the future, they'll learn about female body parts together, coed, right?
In grade six.
And one of the, one of, and I know, like, this is the beauty of a committee, is that, like, everybody has different opinions, but the, something that was important to me and just as a member of the subcommittee was, as we get older, like the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, the shame piece gets removed a little bit. Like, if you are not comfortable sitting in a room with your cogender peers talking about body parts, then you shouldn't be doing anything with those peers and their body parts. Like, it's an age where they begin to explore, I mean, we've done all this, we've talked at this at length, but it's an age where they start to do, um, be interested in each other's opposite gender. So, so a nice introduction to that might be just the, um, bit about hearing about each other's bodies, um, in a shared space and, and eliminating some of those private, um, some of the misinformation or the secrecy around, like, what's happening across the hall. And so that was just another piece that we talked about that I think, among the many other, um, reasons that were mentioned in this packet about why some of these changes are eventually occurring, but.
And I can't, you know, follow that up more strongly with, and everybody knows it, the world wide web. If we're not doing this in a thoughtful, comprehensive way, they're getting that on their own, on the world wide web.
Yeah, the kids are, now, they have like cell phones by the sixth grade, so they can just look it up. So my thought on it is, like, thank you for teaching my kid, like, as an introduction, so they kind of know the right way, instead of them, like, looking up things and finding things that maybe they shouldn't because they have no idea and they're looking for some answer. So at least if they're getting it about the opposite gender here, then at least some questions are answered to maybe appease their minds, so they're not searching for it elsewhere. Um, I know in years, previous years, they've only learned about themselves, like, the females only learned about the females, the males only learned about the males. So this year, they're learning about the opposite, which I think is a good thing, because I wish my kids had learned about the opposite younger, because they never did, until older. Like, I mean, they just didn't learn at that time. I think it's important in this day and age, for sure.
And I just want to echo thanking everybody's time on the whole matter, so.
And thank you, Wendy, for challenging this so that we could get it right, you know, when it comes out, cause I think that that's important to look at all the perspectives.
Thank you for being so open, and Kate too, I mean, she really was the aunt, um, you know, meeting with all the fifth and sixth grade teachers.
And just to say, like, a little fact that Kate had said about it, like, we are one of the very minimal districts that do not do it, like, that haven't done it this way already. Like, we are in the, in the less of that, like, that's how a lot of the districts are already doing it, um, together, so, just to say.
Right, but I still like to keep it separate because I feel like the awkwardness of a fifth grade, or is, you know, for a boy and a girl, they need to learn about themselves and not feel awkward and be able to ask a question or say whatever they need to without the opposite gender, you know, in this example.
I, I think that's perfect, they can learn about themselves and then they can learn together.
Yeah, me too, I think that worked out really well. It's a good, happy medium.
I was kind of freaking out about mine.
Me too.
It's still elementary, even though they're up here.
I agree.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, next, this.
Oh, um, I do have the next one, and I'm going to need some help. So, um, the Student Opportunity Act, um, we believe that we're going to benefit from improved funding, which will help some of the discussion we have here tonight about resources and, um, positions in Abington. And so the problem right now, though, is the state still hasn't separated out the amount of money from our chapter seventy money, that is this Student Opportunity Act money. Once we know what that amount of money is, there'll be a process for us to apply for it, but it's there for us. And more information is coming and Felicia's going to give you more of an update. Hope I didn't steal most of your update.
No, that's fine.
That means I did.
So, uh, the, and I'll just give a little more detail, the governor, um, signed a law in November, um, the Funding Reform Bill, which invested, uh, one point five billion dollars in additional education, uh, money into K twelve education over the next five years. So, it's a significant, um, amount of money. And it also, besides increasing chapter seventy funding, also expands what can be eligible expenses, uh, for circuit breaker reimbursement, which is the money we get back in special education, um, expenses. So, uh, I think, we don't know the impact yet. They know like the grand dollar amount, but it's not disaggregated for the circuit breaker, especially, um, by town. So, part of what comes with the Student Opportunity Act is, um, a, uh, the, the additional funding requires that the money be used on, or focus the funds on evidence-based programs to just, to reduce the disparity among student subgroups. That's the language that's used in the law. There's gonna be, um, in the coming weeks, I, I actually thought it would be out, um, this week, um, from the Department of Education, a template and, uh, a, a format to, uh, for cities and towns to use to identify how they're gonna use the funding. So, we still don't have that, um, yet from the state. And part of the process in developing that, um, action plan will incorporate, um, the school councils and the school committee, um, and then be submitted to, uh, the Department of Education for approval.
You thought you'd have it because it says in here that they, the letter they sent you that you'd have it.
Correct, and we don't know.
When does that get, work get done? So, when you get it and the template comes, when, do you, does it come at a future meeting that we talk here about, like, suggestions for...
So, we've never done this before, um, so we're waiting on what that will look like, but, um, from, from the, uh, information that's been provided from the state, yes. Uh, there'll be guidance through school councils and it's approved by the school committee, um, at the end. So, um, I think though, the groundwork will be done. I would, I would think administrators in schools, school councils, and then come to the school committee, um, but school committee can be involved in that process and I anticipate at the next school committee meeting, I'll be talking more about the process.
With the subcommittee.
A subcommittee, yeah.
We'll have there, we'll, we'll have to get the input of the sub, the school committee subcommittee also for finance.
Oh, budget and finance, yes.
Any other questions, Dr. Michelle? You're up next anyway.
Ah. Keep on talking. So, I have for your consideration tonight, uh, the FY twenty-one capital plan, which upon, um, your approval will be submitted to the town to be included in the town's capital plan. There are four items, um, to be considered. The first one, um, increased school security at Beaver Brook and Woodsdale, which will, would include, um, additional security cameras, interior and exterior, electronic doors, panic, uh, buttons and key fob entry system. That would, uh, the, just, the key fob would not be on every exterior door, but those doors that are most often used, the same that, as it is in this building. And the estimated cost of that is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The second one is, uh, paint and lead abatement, uh, at the Frollo School. The, um, the, the paint is starting to peel in places, so we've estimated that cost at seventy thousand dollars. Number three, you've seen before, and that's a new roof at the Woodsdale School, an estimated cost of one point four million dollars. That one is, um, we can get another year out of that roof, so that isn't necessarily something that we're looking to be funded this year, but something that we wanna make sure that this committee and the community is still aware, is aware that that is going to be an expense that will, um, have to be undertaken in, in future years. And, um, parking lot repair and replacement at, um, at Beaver Brook, so Ralph Hamlin Lane and the parking lot, and that's at an estimated cost of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And, um, that's another one that would be, um, a nice to have, but not as pressing as I believe number one and two are, the school security and the painting and light abatement at the Frollo.
Any questions for Dr. Michelle? Well, I'll make a motion to approve the full year, the fiscal year twenty-one capital plan.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. New business next meeting, so our next meeting is February twenty-fifth here and then right after, the next one after that will be March twenty-fourth, both at seven P.M., um, both in the library. Some dates to remember, uh, Thursday, this Thursday, two days in service, early release day. Um, next Wednesday, February fifth, Greenway Boosters meeting in the middle high school library or cafeteria at seven P.M. Next Thursday is also an in-service early, early release day. Um, on Wednesday, February twelfth, Abington Education Foundation will have their monthly meeting at the town hall at seven P.M. And, uh, Monday, February seventeenth through the twenty-first is the winter break with the seventeenth being President's Day, um, with school offices and buildings all closed. And that's all I had. I don't think they have anything else. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.